Want to welcome you in attendance, as well as those that might be on Facebook for this special event. I'm going to start out by just giving you a brief overview of some of the things that's happening in Blue Springs. I think you have to be oblivious to yourself if you don't see some of the exciting things that are happening. All you have to do is drive around town. We've opened the, when I say "we," within the city, we've opened the St. Luke's Multi-Specialty Clinic, which is a welcome addition to our city. Next month, you should have the opening of the White Oak Complex, where we'll have an 85,000 square foot new Price Shopper going in, but it will also have a Johnnys Tavern in it. We have two Quick Trips that close, and they build a large generation, a Gen III, I think is what they call it. Quick Trip there at 40 and 7. There's another one under construction on Woods Chapel Road. There are not many housing permits that are still being issued. So we're certainly, uh, city, on the move and on the right track. Councilman Carter.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Am I using this mic? No, this mic. That mic.
You may not yell that up through all this time. It looks cool, though.
It really does. Oh, use that mic.
You want to look cool.
Oh, they want me to use this mic. Okay, cool. All right. Hello. First of all, we have a great crowd here tonight. We had a bunch of seats. We didn't know if they'd all be filled, and they are. So let's show the crowd. Let them hear you. Let them hear you on Facebook. Come on now. All right. Everybody's awake. Uh, I represent the first district of Blue Springs. Most folks think of that as north of I-70, but there's also a track that comes down, Adams Dairy Parkway to 40 Highway, and gets all that commercial business that's in there. How many of you are from District 1 here tonight? Hey, okay. It's a quiet crowd. Um, the mayor mentioned the St. Luke's Specialty Clinic, which we're very proud of. That is in District 1. Um, we also have the Neader's Bakery that opened in the Home Depot parking lot, which I haven't been there, but Councilman Kayler goes there, I think, every day. Yeah, he's there every day. Uh, and he says the food is great. Um, we have the Scooters Coffee House. Construction is almost complete on the new drive-through Scooters. That's on Northwest 7 Highway in front of Blue Springs Fitness, if you know where that is. And something that we're excited about coming in the budget, hopefully it'll be approved here in the next month, um, the Roanoke Drive improvement from Adams Dairy Parkway to Porter Road. It's something that's long overdue, and we've done major projects like this in the other two districts, and it's District 1's turn. Uh, so Roanoke Drive looks like it's going to be improved. So that's kind of what's going on in District 1. District 2, Councilman Chris Levisay.
Oh, took in your name. Thank you, Councilman Carter. Uh, just want to say, uh, all of the exciting things are happening in District 2, and I say that with them on both sides of me. So I'm taking my life in my own hands. But as the mayor mentioned, there is a little project that used to be called White Oak Shopping. Uh, it's been completely redone and a nice facelift that is bringing a lot of attention to the whole town. It should be opening, and Mr. Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, next month. Is that right? Expected completion is in September. So the new Price Shopper should be open. The way I understand that to be is, what I'm hearing is, it'll be the same as, if you remember the High V, uh, Price Shopper on the west side, on the east side, will be open up until day one. Next day, the new Price Shopper will be open. So there should be no delay in service. You should be able to continue to do your shopping. Uh, I want to continue to do, uh, the Mythbusters City Council addition. Uh, there is not a sports academy going in the old Price Shopper, or an Academy Sports, or anything currently sports-related planned for the old Price Shopper. That is a rumor that has been prolific. So we have talked about it at the last Town Hall meeting. Want to talk about this one, too, because I continue to see it on Facebook. Uh, there is a potential tenant, but nobody that is ready to announce anything yet, or nothing secure. We just have some attention to it. So something will go in there. Hopefully, something will go in there quickly, but it is not a sports academy, at least not as of yet, just so everybody knows. Uh, something else that's happening right in the middle of District 2, um, we're going to invite about 100,000 of our closest friends to Main Street here in just about a month, something called the Fall Fun Fest, September 15th, 16th, and 17th. Did I get that right, Laura? Friday, 15th, 16th, and 17th, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So coming out, the parade is obviously a big draw on Saturday morning, and I think all of us will be in it. You gonna be there this year? All right. So you can come see our ugly mugs on the parade, and then all the other exciting stuff that comes after us. Um, so that's another big thing. Second Saturdays are still happening, right in downtown Blue Springs. Um, so that is the same day as the car cruise as well. So a lot of things happening downtown. And something that Councilman Culpepper, uh, mentioned to me here that's new from the Downtown Alive group, something called Stranger Things, Stranger Springs. Thank you. Stranger Springs, it's our Halloween event this year. It'll be on October 28th. It's a pub crawl, and costumes are optional, but there will be prizes for the best costume, both male and female. Uh, and it is by ticket only, so see the Downtown Alive group. Uh, usually, there's some merchants downtown. You can buy those from anyone in particular. Always, always America's Community Bank, any of the stores downtown, uh, the Pizza Shop or Brewers, all those guys will have those for sale. So coming out for that on October 28th. Um, and yes, did I mess something up?
No, I think that our system is not broadcasting. So can you give me one?
Yeah, absolutely. I can do all that over again. These guys didn't hear it the first time, so.
I think you're on a great roll.
Okay. I only have seven minutes, so I gotta keep it going.
Are those Nana's in your district?
Say that again?
Nana's Restaurant?
Nana's Restaurant's a little south of me. That would be Councilman Culpepper here, yes. So, uh, I'll do this just for the benefit of the studio audience. So District 2, uh, as Councilman Carter mentioned, District 2 is mostly south of I-70, west of 7 Highway, and north of 40 Highway. It's not exclusively true, because I live east behind Zarda BBQ, and there's a little cutout to the east of 7 Highway. And then 19th and Clark, there's a little cutout to the south of 40 Highway. Uh, and that's District 2 also. So knowing that, how many of you live in District 2? Oh, see, I got about, not quite as many as you. I got the front row, see? We are passionate believers here, District 2. That's right. We're engaged citizens, so, yeah. We're gonna do a district wave later. We'll make it happen. We do, I mean, if we have downtime, we need to, like, interview people from the audience or something. I don't know. Yeah. I don't, I'm, we, you know, like, furthest traveled and, you know, longest married, like, those wedding games, you know, stuff like that? I don't know. We're in, uh, Cordell Mason, so it's probably District 1 that would be the furthest traveled. Anybody?
I felt like it was the front row.
Yeah, well, you live off of Duncan, so anybody live off of Pink Hill that's come down here? No?
You're close.
Pink Hill and 7, that might be the winner. Yeah, that's pretty close.
What if he wins?
Uh, well, Scott's District 1, so he has to give him a prize, so.
Scooters Coffee.
Scooters Coffee, when it opened.
It just opened today.
Oh, it did? Okay.
No, the sign was up there.
They just opened. I didn't know that either. So the closest travel would be anybody in Lake Village.
Wow, we've gone to the third system.
Oh, we're in the backup. So do I still need this, David? Still use the microphone? Okay. Because we're still recording, is that why? Uh, I don't remember where I left off. Uh, we're, still have a lot of exciting things happening downtown. Um, so I think the, uh, the most, the soonest thing will obviously be the Fall Fun Fest come up in a couple of weeks. Um, I don't think there's any other particular, oh, the mayor mentioned the Quick Trip, uh, 40 and 7. That's also District 2, another exciting thing. But on Woods Chapel, uh, Quick Trip is again moving across Woods Chapel to, what would that be, the west side of Woods Chapel? What does this make, the third time that we decide? So the fourth time that Quick Trip has gone back and forth to Woods Chapel, if you've been here long enough and you're counting. Uh, but it's a good thing, because they're building another Gen 3 store, which is, uh, exciting. So I think Quick Trip has a good model. I live right by the old Vesper one, so I was a little disappointed to see it close. But a lot of, a lot of exciting stuff happening in District 2. But I will be excited to see, hear your questions as well. So I'll pounce it on to Councilman Culpepper.
All right, thank you. Well, we don't have a lot of commercial, uh, going on. District 3, which is basically south of 40 Highway with a little cutout in Plaza, um, is primarily residential, and we have a lot of new homes going in, a lot of development all the way down to Coburn Road. We do have some exciting items coming in, though, at the entrance to Eagles Ridge. We have a grocery store coming in, and, um, in addition to that, there will be some other development, commercial development. Nothing signed on the dotted line yet for me to give you any names, but it is planned, and so you won't have to drive all the way to the north side of town. You can stay in District 3. The other thing that I think is very exciting is Colonial, it used to be Colonial Nursery, it's now Colonial Gardens. And they are just about complete with their new restaurant. They're completely remodeling that entire area, um, and it's going to be a destination place, and the restaurant is slated right now to open tentatively the first day of November. So that is very exciting. It's, it's a beautiful building, and I think everybody will enjoy that. She uses nothing but all natural foods and homegrown, and so I think it's going to be great. She was, the gal that's doing this, was in the Bean Counter Cafe, if you're familiar with that. So, um, and like I said, most of our development is residential, so we are, we are growing by leaps and bounds as we go down south. So I will turn this now over to Dennis to tell you about the parks.
Good evening and thank you. Um, just want to bring up to date on the park sales tax that was approved by the voters. First, uh, on behalf of the Parks Department, we want to thank all the residents for their vote of confidence in these projects, and hopefully allowing us to, to make significant improvements in our park system over the next five years. This, the tax actually hasn't started being collected yet. It starts October 1st, and the city won't actually start gaining revenue or receiving the revenue from the state until sometime in late December. Once that begins, then, starting next year, we'll address, uh, some of the deferred maintenance projects that were outlined in the sales tax. Uh, the first major projects that you'll see in 2018 will be Ward Park's playground will be replaced along with Rotary Park's playground. There are actually two playgrounds at Rotary Park. There's a small one that's closer to Zarda BBQ. That's the one that will actually be replaced. Uh, the Pink Hill Park tennis courts and the Blue Springs Park tennis courts will be renovated as well. And then Woods Chapel Park's trail, along with Baumgartner Park Trail, will be renovated. And then the golf course bunkers will be renovated as part of that. As we move forward over the, the next four years, uh, the big project that a lot of people were interested in was a splash pad. Uh, Old Mill Park will see renovations occurring in 2019, which will include the, um, development of that splash pad. And then over the next years, uh, we'll address the rest of the deferred maintenance needs that were outlined in the park sales tax. Uh, we're still on track. Uh, it's a $15 million investment that we'll be making in the parks over the next five years, and we hope to, uh, earn your support as we move forward, as that only addresses about 40% of our deferred maintenance needs. So after this, we'll certainly, uh, look at ways, if we need to renew that, or if there's opportunities for us not to renew that, we'll be looking at that as well. But certainly, um, it's important that we address those needs. Also, just recently, we've been receiving some requests about additional park projects. Right now, our focus will be on those projects that were outlined. If there's additional revenues from savings in those projects, we'll certainly look at deferred maintenance needs that we have throughout our park system and address those if there's money available moving forward. So with that, again, I just want to say thank you, and be happy to answer any questions during this time.
I guess we need Ivanna White to be able to carry this. It's minimal. I want to make a couple of acknowledgements before we, uh, open it up to questions. I want to thank the Blue Springs School District for allowing us to use this facility. Cordell Mason Elementary School brings a lot of memories to me and the First Lady, because two of our grandchildren, who are now adults, went to Cordell Mason when it was a much smaller facility than it is today. Yes. And our, one of our granddaughters teaches first grade here. Her mom, our oldest daughter, teaches at the freshman center, so I have, we have two generation of Blue Springs school teachers now. So we're very proud of that. But I also want to acknowledge a couple of our council members that are not sitting up here, that are out there in the audience. Councilman Edmondson, and he just waved at you, from District 2. Councilman Kayler from District 1. And Councilman Fowler, District 3, would like to be here in the audience, but he had a commitment. He serves as the council liaison on the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Board, so that's where he is tonight. So anyway, that being said, and certainly, First Lady Eloise, uh, is here, there in a wheelchair, and I kind of drag her around wherever I go, she goes. So I guess that's why we've been married almost 48 years. That being said, let's open it up for questions. I guess we'll go to those in the audience. And I don't know, we're gonna have somebody, we're gonna have them come up to the microphone? What's going to be the plan here?
If anybody would like to, is anybody in the audience have any questions?
You can come up to the microphone and tell us who you are and what district you live in.
Alice First, District 1.
Can you please speak with the microphone? I'm so sorry.
Alice First, District 1. Um, I'm here because I wanted to learn more about what happened to our recycling center. Um, I read a little bit about it, but I'd like to hear verbally what happened there, and if there's anything that we could do to fix it. And as you might remember, I was the chair of the Solid Waste Management Commission when we started it. Kind of disappointed here.
Well, let me start out, and then I'll have the councilmen chime in if they would like to. Blue Springs is the third largest city in Eastern Jackson County. The two largest cities in Eastern Jackson County, Independence and Lee Summit, no longer offer a recycling center. And commodity prices have gone down, and the trash haulers have increased their price. We went from $12,000 to $100,000. And we, the traffic has also increased there, because guess what? It's not only Blue Springs residents coming to that recycle center now, we have residents coming from other communities in Eastern Jackson County, probably from Independence and Lee Summit and Grain Valley and Oak Grove. And certainly, the city cannot afford to subsidize that. And that's one of the reasons that it was just cost prohibitive for us to continue doing that. One of the things that I've suggested, and I know a number of the council members have also suggested, is that you use your private trash hauler, who can haul that, I think, between $5 and $6 a month, and you don't have to drive to the recycling center. You put it curbside, and they'll pick that up. But we cannot be the only city in Eastern Jackson County providing its service for that cost. Anybody else who wants to chime in?
Two points on that. I think it's, it's a case where, you know, something that was done for the good, which is recycling, has been done too well, because everybody's doing it, and as a result, the commodities prices, as the mayor pointed out, have gone through the floor, so there's no money in it for the trash haulers anymore, which is why they're going to charge us more. Uh, the other thing is, in addition to the communities that have shut it down, the school districts have shut it down. So we are really the only one in the region that has a recycling center right now. And someone made a suggestion to me, why don't you staff it up and check IDs and make sure it's only Blue Springs residents who are using it? Well, if we do that, that's just going to add more cost to it and make it even more cost prohibitive.
Uh, I just want to mention a couple of things on this. First of all, the closing of the recycling center is a proposed thing in our current budget. So right now, it's not something that is officially happening until the council approves our budget at our meeting next month. So there's still time, as residents of Blue Springs, for you to be responsive and let us know as the council that that is a priority for you as residents, and that it's something you want us to continue to fund. So it's a proposed closing based on our budget. The reason for that is, as, as has been mentioned, the cost, as it was up to now, was $12,000 annually. The trash hauler currently has upped that, if we were to continue that, to be $100,000 annually. So that's, you know, 1,000% increase, or however many thousand percent increase. So it's something that, that, yes, is a much more expensive, and it's something that, if we are going to continue to do anything like it, it's going to take some prioritization from the council. And, and I don't know if there's will to do that, but I, but I just wanted to let you know, that's something that, as we're looking through our budget process, we have to make those hard decisions. We can't fund everything all the time. And so there's a time when we have to prioritize, what do the residents want, what is most beneficial to them? Um, and if, if that gets funded, something else may not. And so that's just a part of that process, as we're looking through the budget, that you have to be aware of, and that we need feedback from in order to make those decisions educatedly. So that's all I want to say about that.
Um, and I will tell you that the city has attempted to negotiate these fees multiple times. This is not just a one-shot deal. This didn't happen overnight. Um, we've been working on this for quite some time. I have personally contacted several of the, um, trash haulers here. Gravit Waste Solutions is one that operates in Blue Springs. They currently charge 57 for a quarter for trash pickup, and it's $10 more per quarter if you want the recycling. And again, they come to you. You don't have to drive across town to do it. WCA is $5 a month. So, um, if you are conscientious and recycle, which I always encourage people to do, it's a minor amount of money out of your pocket, and it saves you traveling across town. But as has been pointed out, there are certain things we can and cannot do, and when you jump from $12,000 to $100,000, it, it really puts some major restrictions, and we have to give that some heavy thought. So I would suggest that you contact your trash haulers.
I heard that there was only one bid that came in. Did you all go back and negotiate with them at all to try to get it to come down lower? Or were they firm that you couldn't negotiate at all?
That's what Councilman Culpepper said, that this has been an ongoing negotiating process, so.
So you did go back and, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Staff has done some negotiating. Yeah.
Hi, Scott Casey, District 1. Uh, as most of you know, I ran for city council this past year in April, and as part of that, I knocked on about 809 to 900 doors. And, uh, I just wanted to let you know that this is an issue that came up at the doors as well, um, as something, people were hoping to see the, the center's hours expand. So I know a lot of people are going to be disappointed to, to see the center closing. A lot of the issues that you just brought up, uh, I have been doing some, some of my own research, and I've seen that as well. Uh, I reached the same conclusion, that, that it's going to be very difficult to fund this project going forward. Uh, so I've been making a lot of calls, doing a lot of research, and I'd like to propose a, a different solution if you'd be so inclined to listen. So what I'd like to propose is that we, as a city institute, what I'm calling a Green Blue Springs Waste Management Ordinance. And what that would be, essentially, there's a, a lot of parts to it, but the main key part is that we move to require the city waste haulers to, to switch to a, what's called a variable rate pay model. And with that model, it's also called pay-as-you-throw, commonly. Uh, so with that model, what you see is, uh, the people that throw away more trash end up paying more, and the people that, uh, focus on recycling and composting and things like that end up paying less for their trash. And what you see in communities that do that is, uh, a significant increase in recycling. So I think that would be something that would work really well here in this situation. Uh, it would promote more recycling. It would help us achieve our goals of waste deferment. Uh, and, uh, you know, in addition to that, um, I'd also like to see the city consider, uh, transforming our, our current recycling center, maybe using grant fund, grant funds for, uh, for this, into a compost community center. And I think you'd see, uh, that be a lot more reasonable to maintain than, uh, the current recycling center with hauling fees and things like that. Uh, so with that, you'd end up, uh, you know, residents that would use the composting would end up saving even more money on their trash, um, under the new system. So I just wanted to, to leave that for your consideration. I've got a ton of resources, and I've been talking to a lot of experts about this, so I'd be happy to share that with you after this, if you'd be willing to listen.
Thank, thank you, Scott. I, uh, you know, I just recently appointed you to the planning commission, and the city council approved it. And we look forward for your creativity and your, uh, out-of-the-box thinking on a lot of things. And also, I want to suggest, with, with most boards, with the boards and commissions that we have, in most cases, when people have an idea, we'll, we'll vet that through those boards and commissions. Uh, Alice that spoke earlier, uh, she used to be chairman of the Solid Waste Commission. And so I would suggest that that idea be given to the Solid Waste Commission, of which we have, and let them vet your suggestions and see what they come up with, and they make recommendations to the city council.
Yeah, I'd be happy to talk to them. Thank you.
Yes, okay. Thank you, Scott.
Hi, my name's, hello. My name's Cheryl Moser, and I'm with District 3, and I'm glad to see that other people are here concerned about the loss of recycling in the community, and that's what I'm here about. And I sent an email to all the council and Mayor Ross recently, and, um, just wanted to see if, you know, I think the prior speaker's, um, suggestion is a fantastic one, and I think that would be a really awesome way to go about it. Um, or, you know, I had kind of mentioned, well, maybe we should go back to Mayor Ross's original idea a few years ago, which was to try to get bids to do, you know, a single hauler that, that bundles it in. And maybe this is the time to revisit that, since it would appear that, you know, there is considerable interest in this. Um, so anyway, that's what, what, and I know that was painful for you all, from what I understand. So I realize there may not be a lot of support for that, but, um, but still, I mean, now that this has happened, or is, probably will happen, which I totally understand, the cost is astronomical, um, you know, it, it might be something to consider, because from, from when I called RecycleSpot.org, they were saying that other, um, cities that have done this, the costs go down, uh, and the service is better, because that, that hauler wants to maintain that contract. And if you bundle it in, then people are more likely to do it, because they get the, they get the, the box to put it in, and it happens a whole lot more, and the recycling goes way up, and we save landfill space. And I know you were talking about how it, um, reduces costs as far as wear and tear on the streets. And so there's a lot of advantages to, I think, the people of Blue Springs, as well as the city. Um, but I guess it's just a matter of, how do you feel about going through that process again, I guess, is the question.
Well, you know, Cheryl, I think maybe you and Scott can get together, and you all can talk about how you can go back, take these ideas back to the Solid Waste Commission for them to vet and try to figure out something that they can bring back.
Okay, that, that sounds great.
That works.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You're up. You're waiting in queue.
All right, thank you. My name is Stan Sikorsky. I live by Blue Springs North High School. That, that must be District 2, I think?
District 2.
All right. Well, anyway, I work at the recycle center, and I've noticed a great increase of people that have been coming, and I guess, you know, we've seen all the other cities kind of fall with their recycling, and obviously, we've got quite an increase. And like you say, there's a lot of people come from Oak Grove, Grain Valley, Odessa, Independence.
Lee Summit.
Lee Summit.
Right.
I mean, does that say something? At least they're coming here, which is a good thing, you know, because there's also the environment that we've got to deal with sooner or later. And in regards to, I think what's most disappointing about recycling is that they, they charge you if you're going to pick it up at the house. So here's just a couple thoughts to think about on that. Uh, we could charge admission to the Blue Springs Pink Hill Recycling Center. I've talked to some people who come in, they're willing to pay. I picked a number out of the sky. I'm not a financial guy. I said, supposing we charged them $5 to come in? I would say, out of this, about 95% of them said they would do it. And I don't know if you got to put, like, a little swipe card to put it in there to open the gate to let them in, close the gate, and you can bring as much as you want for the gate to let them in, close the gate, and you can bring as much as you want for five bucks. Or you could make it three bucks for Blue Springs and five bucks for Odessa. That's, I mean, that's one way of thinking about it. The other disappointing thing is, you know, getting paid for the product. I mean, that's our trash, we've paid for it, and we're going to give it to somebody to make money from it somehow. But why don't we haul our own trash to Batliner or wherever it goes? Who's to say that Batliner won't pay us as much as they would pay WCA? At least, we know what we're giving them and what we're going to get back. So that's another option, too.
Well, they're not paying very much right now, that's why.
They're not paying us very much.
They're not paying the trash haulers that hauled it away very much anymore.
Right. But if we take our own, if we find out how much a load of our cardboard is, at least we could get that money, too. And then when I figured the $5 a person, if we have like 700 people come on one week just using 600 people, because we'll probably lose some, and if we lose some, we don't have to ship so much either. So if they would, if we use like 600 people a week, $5 a crack to get in, that's 3,000. And go by 52 weeks, that's 156,000. At least I'm trying to see what would be palatable. I don't know what you guys can do and what we can do. So somebody's got to put it all together.
Yeah, there are a lot of questions that would need to be answered. Again, if you're going to have some kind of deviation between Blue Springs residents and other residents, someone's going to have to check their ID, which means you're going to have personnel that you're going to have to hire to do that.
It would have to go from the debit card. If they put it in, they got to, you got to pay. It could be a flat amount, five bucks. You drive in that place, it's going to cost you five bucks.
So we're not just going to charge Odessa five bucks, we're going to charge everybody.
Well, I understand that, I understand that. I like that idea, too. But maybe you could say, put your zip code in and then it charges accordingly.
Okay.
So, you know, I don't know what could work and what couldn't work, but I thought that might be an idea. And if people really want to recycle and do it, at least they know we'd be doing it and trying to get a return on our money, not putting it on the curb and letting it go and paying and not getting nothing back. At least this way, we tried to get something. I mean, whether we would bail the cardboard or what have you, I mean, there's ways of doing that.
I'm going through some information that our wonderful staff has provided to us. And as I look at the material rebates, our currently, under our, what we're doing right now, we get $4,096, that's the current monthly revenue. With the new bids and what they can get out of that this coming is $512. So you're looking at $3,500 difference. So it's very hard to justify that kind of financial change.
But that's working through the trash hauler, that's not working with Batliner, who's the distributor for, that's probably who WCA is taking it to, and they're going to keep whatever they, but never mind, you know how it might work, that's fine.
I'm going to change topics, if that's okay. Just make sure, make sure you're in. So a couple, I'm seeing a lot of stuff on Facebook, and I know we haven't got a lot of questions from Facebook yet, so I want to do a couple that I've seen related District Two. There's been a lot of discussion about development on Woods Chapel, specifically a grocery store on Woods Chapel. Councilman Edmondson and myself, I would, I want to say, like, we constantly, but very, very frequently, are talking to our EDC manager and trying to see if there's some updates about that process. As we've communicated often, the city council, or us as councilmen, or the city as a government cannot force a grocery store to locate on Woods Chapel. And so we are doing everything we can. We've had a lot of new development. Hopefully, that move of QuickTrip makes spur some development on that west side, because that's where all the lots are. We've talked to the property owners there and see who they're looking to, who they're having discussions with. I think most of you know, over the years, we've had discussions with the grocery stores in town and they don't feel like there's a market to move over there. And so until a grocery store of some kind feels like they can make money by locating on Woods Chapel, so far, none have done that. So there is, we have talked with the property owners about that development in general. There's a lot of new infrastructure there, new stuff happening with the QuickTrip, so hopefully that will spur some development there. One thing, a lot of scene about the trash haulers and just about taxes in general, because it's something you see a lot on Facebook or you hear from residents a lot, is, well, you're spending, you know, a million dollars to fix this and $100,000 to fix that, why couldn't you just not fix that truck and then spend that on the recycling center this year? Well, there's a difference when it comes to budgeting between annual costs and single costs. So if we spend $1,000 to fix a truck one year, that's just $1,000 for that one year versus if we keep the recycling center open, that's $100,000 every year for in perpetuity. So we don't just have to find $100,000 in the budget this year, we have to find $100,000 in the budget every single year from now till the end of time. So that's a budgeting thing. The other thing just about taxes, and I know I'm talking fast because I want to take up all the time, why, see a lot on Facebook and hear a lot from residents, we pay all these taxes, why can't the city do X, whatever that is? Well, of all the property taxes you pay, and depending on the expense of your house, that's going to be different, of all the property taxes you pay, the city of Blue Springs only gets 12, no, 8%. 8% of your property taxes come back to the city. The rest of it goes to some other political subdivision, most of it the school district. The school district gets about 65% of your property taxes. So all of that property tax you pay, the city's only getting less than 10% of that. Of all the sales tax you pay, and you know, you see a lot, our sales tax is high, which it's really not, it's comparable to our surrounding cities. But even if you want to make the argument that our sales tax is the highest in the metro, the city only gets 26% of all the sales taxes you pay back to the city. 75% of your sales tax is going to the state mostly, about half of it goes to the state. Some of it goes to Central Jackson County, which is another public safety thing, things like that. So the city is not getting all the taxes you pay, the city's getting very little of the taxes you pay, which is something to think about, especially with a sales tax issue that's generally a local government way of revenue. So next time you vote for half cent to fix the stadiums in Kansas City, or half cent to pay for the zoo that you never visit, or something like that, just remember, that's eroding at the amount of taxes available to your local government that provides services directly to you. So that's an important thing to realize when we're talking about budgeting and the money the city has available. 8% of your property tax and 26% of your sales tax is all we get out of all the taxes you pay. And so I think that's an important thing when you're looking at all that money that we're having discussions over. We're trying to make a budget over just a small sliver of what it is you're paying. So that's important information. I also want to apologize to my counterpart, Kent Edmondson, because I should have introduced you in my introduction. He does probably more work than I do representing the residents of District Two. So Kent, thank you for being here for support. And I also would be remiss if I didn't say hi to my kids because they're watching at home. So, hi Benjamin, hi Emily. All right, I'll pass it back to, oh, there you go.
Well, Grace already knows she's there. Grace told me to say hi.
Since we're talking about Facebook, I had a couple of questions also. Someone asked about the grocery store on South Seven. That's going to be at Eagles Ridge, which is right across the street from the, what is that church? First Christian Church. It's a fairly new subdivision down there. And the grocery store, as you go in that entrance, the first thing they're going to be developing is that section to the south of that entrance. So that is the grocery store. The other question that came up is concerning fire protection, and I'm going to attack that because that's one of my little deals. I have someone who has asked about fire protection on the south side of town being covered by Prairie Township Fire District rather than CJC. I can tell you that we are working on that issue. Prairie is working with us very closely and hope very soon to be able to bring to the residents a solution. So right now, because of some lawsuits and things, we're trying to get everything, I's dotted, T's crossed, if you will. So that is being addressed, though.
All right, we had a question from John on Facebook. He wants to know what the city is doing about the abandoned hotel at Seven and I-70. I'd love to bulldoze the thing, but a lot of it is out of our hands. But I feel the same way that you do and I'd love to see the thing go away as well. One of the things that we haven't hit on yet about taxes, when you buy something on amazon.com, the city's portion of that tax is not coming to the city. I don't know if you're aware of that or not. So it's a disadvantage for the brick and mortar stores in Blue Springs. Laura knows that very well. One of the things that we're going to be tackling, and probably in conjunction with other cities like Lee Summit and Independence, is getting you to approve our ability to get that tax from internet providers. And that's going to be a big number that we don't have access to right now that would allow us to do more things for the citizens of Blue Springs and would make our local businesses more competitive with their internet counterparts. I mean, Amazon's taking a lot of tax revenue from the city of Blue Springs, Independence, and Lee Summit as well. So that's something that you're going to be seeing, that's a headline coming down the road.
I don't have a Facebook computer in front of me, so I.
So my Facebook will be you guys. Well, to kind of follow up on what Councilman Carter said, just Amazon alone, the city of Blue Springs is missing about $300,000 a year. The city of Independence, about $700,000 a year. I mean, Lee Summit, and the city of Independence is over a million that they're missing out on because we aren't able to collect those taxes. Roscoe, you got something for us?
I will address you, yes.
All right.
Roscoe Ryder, District One. I'm not going to beat the closing of the recycling center to death, you've heard already. I would ask, how many of you here, though, are concerned about that tonight that may not address it? I knew there was a bunch. I'm concerned with it, I'm a regular user. I pay $5 a month now for my home recycling and I take my plastics and tin cans, they're that's it. They require that you have to bundle your cardboard, it's very inconvenient to try to tie it, tape it, or whatever else. I rarely take it to the recycling center. My glass I take up there. I take my one through three plastics to my home recycler, but my four through tens, they will not take. And I'm not sure where I'm going to take them if you close. And I recycle a lot of stuff, I tear apart anything, it breaks down and there's a lot of plastics in them. So I'm concerned, and I'm going to ask council that at least take a look, let us work with some of the planning commission people. I think there's enough citizens that would be willing to sit down, talk, charge us, you know, I'll pay another $5 a month or something to be able to use it and keep it open. And I think other people would. You know, we do have to be concerned with our environment, we've been an environmental city for many years, and I don't want to change that, we need to just try to keep it open.
Yeah, maybe work with the Solid Waste Commission.
Whoever it is.
It's who you work with, yeah.
Little adjustment here. Thanks, Roscoe, for being here. My name is Ruth Doherty. I live in District Two. I've been living in Blue Springs for 35 years, come October. And I am, I saw some familiar faces, I was coming back in that said, oh, haven't seen you for a while, and probably hoped I hadn't crawled out from under my rock, but here I am. First of all, I have friends who say, Ruth, QuickTrip is not the grocery store. But for me, unfortunately, sometimes it is. I am on disability, have been for 10 years, and so you are looking at my trash service right now. I am composter, recycler, and what, very little is left, I get a little help with disposing of. But I also, I guess, and I'm not going to, I was glad that three days and two sleepless nights ago, a new friend of mine notified me, per my response, about the closing of the recycling center and asked if I might come tonight and talk. And that sort of woke me up. And I guess I'd just been a little dormant lately and it kind of caught me off guard about the center, but I've been doing a lot of research and hearing Scott and his plans, I think that's the way to go and get together because this is a very complex issue. Now, those of us, I want to throw a date out, three years from now, April 22nd, three years from now, will be the 50th anniversary of the first Earth Day celebration, 50 years. I've been fighting on the forefront of this battle for 43 years of my life, as a horticulturist and a forestry, as an educator, sacrificed a lot of myself and given it my whole heart. And I love Blue Springs Tree Board, I was on it for its entirety, beginning to end. I was asked to come to Nebraska City for the first and second national Tree City USA conferences, and people across the country were looking at us and saying, how are you doing what you're doing? And so I was more than happy to go up there and try to share our successes with them. So I think that speaks a lot for us and our commitment to that. I don't want to see that change either. I do, having been, had my own budget to balance, when I managed the Arboretum and Botanical Garden Project in Overland Park for its first nine years, I got very acquainted with balancing budgets. And I know how difficult that is, and you have to make choices. And I realize that that can be difficult. I have to say, Chris Lives, yeah, I really like what you were saying. However, I am a little, I'm a little skeptical about some of the numbers that we're getting, say, the haulers in the market. Oh, I forgot my prop. This is a very complex issue. And on the end of where people are buying the materials that are being recycled and processed, sorted, processed, and hauling, those are the three issues, right? Well, I found some really great information on there, and there's a company, Unilever is one, and it's the think globally, act locally thing is getting closer together all the time. And that's what I want to be able to share with Scott, the things I found out. But in my own bathroom, I found the bottle that Unilever was talking about where they have improved the kind of plastic that they have put in this bottle to make it more attractive to the people that will be buying these materials and putting them to new use. These things that we've known all along were going to be, the issues with recycling are starting to get resolved. And they're going to, and they're going to bring jobs, they're going to be, it's just such a complex, like I said, the two sleepless nights I've spent going through all this information, I'm thinking, what can I possibly say to them in this short amount of time to make them see? And I'm glad now, of all things, that we might have a little more time to put this together because these numbers about haulers and things like that, I don't really, I'm not, that's not my best thing that I have to offer. But the importance of it is that, can we afford not to do this? On many, many levels, there are peripheral costs in additional to the actual cost of recycling, of not recycling. You're talking about air and water quality, there's just so many things that go into it that is a hard thing to digest. But you get a group of people together, like we did Tree Board, people that have different areas of expertise. You know, I took a lot of heat about being called, you know, we were the Tree Board. Well, I thought, well, I'll get a group together, why, you know, not a lot of sleep, why can't we have the trash bag? I don't know, let's get a group of people together and share these ideas and things that we know and experience and work through these problems before we give up on it. And so I was glad to hear that it's not a done deal yet and we have a little time to work on this. And I'm more than happy to offer anything that I can to that, to see that. And I, like I said, I have been all over the place. There is a great example, if you're interested, and there's funding out there, the Ellen MacArthur Foundation is a big thing.
So Ruth, let me have you, maybe work with Scott and work with Cheryl and some of them, because we want to give somebody else an opportunity.
I understand, I understand. I told Roscoe to bring his hook, you know, for me.
And Roscoe, whoever.
But the Arizona State and the city of Phoenix, there's an interesting model there. If you have time, you might want to look at that.
Okay, thanks, Ruth.
Mayor Ross, we do have a question that's come up online. The people are asking about the plans for a city hall remodel.
Okay. Right now, we are having discussions about it. It's in the budget. City Hall is 56 years old. We did a remodel in 1989. And right now, we have lost a couple of the activities that we had in City Hall. We had the License Bureau that was there that is now privately owned. We also collected taxes for Jackson County. Right now, City Hall is operating with three different buildings. We have the City Hall building that's been vacated by some of the people that I just mentioned. We also have a building that's out back where we have the community development, and we also have codes enforcement and a duplex in the back. It's very inefficient and something that old needs to be reconfigured and designed so it'll be more effective and more efficient for the customers as well as our employees. One of the other big problems we have at City Hall today, and especially, it's very pronounced with me, with my wife in a wheelchair, is certainly not ADA compatible. You have people, you have to send them out back, and if I have to take her, especially if the weather's bad, to one of those duplexes in the back down that sidewalk, we're probably going to have to call Central Jackson County to pick both of us up. You send people outside in the weather. So there are just a number of things. You send people outside in the weather. So there are just a number of things that need to be changed. I'm a little bit older than that City Hall building. It's almost 60. I'm 70, and I've had to have some replacement parts. And so I would imagine that certainly we have to do something with the existing City Hall because it's just not conducive with taking care of our customers as well as our employees. It's something that's been on the radar, that's been worked on, the unfunded capital improvement budget, except it was unfunded since 2006. And that was to build a brand-new City Hall. But since we've lost some of the activity, the idea came up was we can do it a lot more effectively and a lot less expensive if we remodel what we have. Steph has been working for the last couple of years with the design. We've let contracts with an architect that has come up with a plan that we think is workable. The money is in the capital improvement project budget. So we would have an opportunity to go ahead and get this done and get it behind us. I mean, I could sit and talk a lot more about it, but I'll stop at that unless there's something specific that the person wanted answered.
There's another question about downtown.
About downtown?
There's been several things about downtown. Let me just first start off by saying, because I still see, and it, I guess, is just confusing or flabbergasting to me how you can say that our downtown is not making progress. There are so many new things happening downtown. There's an entire new group called Downtown Alive that is literally meeting weekly, trying to make improvements to downtown. There's new restaurants downtown. There's new businesses downtown. There's people moving from Seven Highway to downtown Blue Springs because of the activity that's happening there. So some people mention Lee Summit as a model. Let me just say, Lee Summit spent a whole lot of tax dollars to make it look like that, including a new City Hall. But they spent a lot of money. And the thing with a downtown, any downtown, but ours specifically, is you have a lot of different property owners. So unless somebody with a whole lot of money can go in and buy up all those property owners, they're not going to have a uniform look in that sense altogether. But that doesn't mean there's not things happening with each business, with each merchant, and with each restaurant that is happening downtown. So if you are of the opinion that there isn't much downtown, I would say you probably haven't been downtown in a long time. The Fall Fun Fest is a good time to come see it. But otherwise, breweries down there is packed all the time. We've got new parking downtown. Pizza shop is packed all the time. There's a new coffee shop downtown. There's a new bookstore downtown. Genovese, I think, has moved to a bigger location. There are improvements being happening, on facade improvements. So a lot of things are happening there, and it's happening on a regular basis. And like I said, there's a group meeting weekly to come up with ideas for design and for improvements for some, Councilman Culpepper's just whispering in my ear here, passing notes in class. We're trying to get some mixed density in areas where you can live in the apartment upstairs while running your business downstairs. And actually, I think that's currently happening in a couple of places. There's some more housing developments that we're working with a developer to do some more housing downtown area. So there's a lot of things happening down there. So get downtown, spend some money downtown. And if you have ideas of other ways you'd like it to look like, that's the kind of feedback the council needs and Councilman Edmondson and myself as the district representatives, but also the groups like Downtown Alive, who are actively engaged in making those things happen. So that's what I'd say. And like I said, if you have more specific questions, call me or email me, and we can talk about those.
Friendship Manners is doing a remodel.
That Friendship Manners remodeling as well, yeah. And that's right in that corridor.
And to get in, one more plug for the Fall Fun Festival coming up in September. If you watch The Voice, Cassie Joy from The Voice is going to be onstage on that Friday night, the 15th. So come on. That's not really my district, but folks from District One, come to the Fall Fun Festival, right? All right.
And all of them are my district.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. My name is Matt Thorne. I'm from District Two. I've lived there pretty much my whole life, except for a small window. And I'd like to kind of go back to the parks if I can. I've recently been engaged with a discussion with the city via Facebook about the condition of parks and the tax that was passed. You know, growing up in this city, as I did, we were always known for our parks. They were always the crown jewel of Jackson County. I wish I could say that that was still the case. It's not. I live directly across the street from Old Mill Park. I walk that park every day. I walk the corridor from Woods Chapel and Walnut to I-70 almost every day. And I don't have the dollar amount in front of me, but I know the city spent a lot of money on that roundabout, on those sidewalks, on all of that landscaping. And it looks awful. It looks awful. Old Mill Park is completely overrun with weeds, completely overrun. There's trash everywhere. I've been tracking a piece of trash in the park. I've been tracking a piece of trash that's been sitting next to the sidewalk just north of the railroad tracks on the west side. It's been there for six weeks. It's a giant red plastic lid this big. It's this big. You can't tell me that somebody that works for the city hasn't seen this thing. They have. You can't, and if they haven't, that's a problem, right? If they haven't seen the trash that's collecting in the flower beds in the park, that's a problem. So it's great that we've passed tax to take care of this park, and we keep hearing about deferred maintenance. There has been no maintenance. I see that that park gets mowed, Old Mill Park, and I use it because, again, I walk it every day. I live across the street. That park goes weeks at a time without being mowed. And when it does get mowed, the clippings are so high that it's killing all the grass. So it's getting completely overrun. So I'd like to hear what the Parks Department is going to do, not about deferred maintenance, but how about just maintenance? And it's not just that corridor. Drive Down Adams Dairy Parkway, all of the money that was spent there on all of that development and all of that landscaping, and it's the same. I sent pictures to the city via Facebook, and the response I got, quite frankly, was kind of insulting because they insinuated that I didn't know the difference between grass and weeds. And I offered up today, and I'll make this offer public right now. Any member of the council or the Parks Department that wants to come meet me at Old Mill Park, I'd be happy to walk the park with you and show you. I emailed the city several weeks ago about the condition of the roundabout, and it was mowed within 24 hours, which is great, but it was that tall, and it was completely overrun. When they came through, they sprayed Total Kill everywhere, just at random. They killed all the good landscape, but they left a bunch of the weeds. So I'd like to know what the Parks Department can do to actually take care of this and make these parks what they used to be when I grew up here, which was fantastic. And Old Mill Park is the hillside on which this city was founded. Literally the hillside on which this city was founded, and it looks awful. So I'd like to hear what the city can do.
Well, first of all, the mowing. The mowing is done by contract mowing. It's mowed every two weeks by a contractor. That's the standard that we use throughout all our park systems currently. We switched this year to a contract mowing instead of doing it in-house simply because it gives us more flexibility to have our staff out in our park system more. The rideaways and the landscape beds, we certainly want to maintain those to the best level that we can. And certainly, I'm not saying we're at 100% capacity with that. We're playing catch-up. We spent a lot of time this year on Adams Dairy Parkway, as you mentioned. That was overgrown significantly. The plants and the vegetation in that area had matured to the point where they were unmanageable. Between basically Walnut and ArtiMize, those beds were totally taken out this winter. They've been replanted, and we continue to work through that. A lot of the vegetation that you talk about around the roundabouts that's dead, a lot of that wasn't done with Total Kill. Most of that that occurred, some of the pictures that you've shown, that's actually plants that have died.
No, I can show you the pattern that shows that that is not true. I can show you that they randomly just sprayed in there. You can't tell me that the kill patterns that are in there are natural death. You can't. And I'm the one guy in this room you can't talk to about that. Come look at my yard.
Okay. I'm not here to argue with you about how we sprayed. Alls I'm telling you is relaying what we've done. A lot of the plants in the pictures that you showed that had dead plants in those, as we've talked to other nurseries and stuff throughout the community, there was an issue with young plants that were native dwarf grasses, which those, some of those pictures that you provided, those were native dwarf grasses. They died because of the lack of rainfall in the winters over the last two years. That's what nurseries have told us. Not saying that we didn't spray. We did spray weeds. I'm not going to say that we didn't. We did spray weeds, but not with Total Kill. If we would have sprayed Total Kill, it would have killed every vegetation in the roundabout area. We do use selective spraying, but it doesn't always work when you're dealing with native plants. Native plants don't tend to work the same way as grass. So when you go out and spray a broadleaf, it affects those just as much as it does a weed. So you can't spray a broadleaf killer on native grasses. There's only certain types that you can do. When it comes to trash, certainly the pictures that you saw, I was disappointed in our staff, and we are addressing that with our staff, and that will be rectified.
Again, I would offer up that I'd be more than happy to walk the park with you.
And certainly, after this, I'll be more than happy to set up a time with you to meet with our park superintendent and go through the park with him.
I appreciate it.
Yeah.
On the parks, how are you guys coordinating with the county parks? Are you talking about riding bicycles or anything? Do you have a relationship with the county parks?
We do work with Jackson County Parks and Recreation. It's not as reciprocal as probably it could be. You know, we've got some areas that we can improve with them. We've been talking with them. But when it comes to bike paths and stuff, they're going to come up to the city property line or into their park properties. What most of their parks end at our park are at our city limits. So Jackson County doesn't have any actual parks in the city limits themselves. Our program right now is to maintain the current trails that we have. And as we move forward through this process, over the years, we're going to look for ways to connect those trails. Our goal would like to be to connect up to the county trails because once we can connect to the county trails, it opens up a whole new trail network for our residents that then they wouldn't have to ride on streets or anything like that.
How about one more question?
Anybody in here?
Can you come up with a question?
We had a meeting a couple of three months ago on doing police protection for Lake Lotawanna. Where are you guys at on that as far as what the, is that still alive or is that a dead issue?
I think I saw a memo from the mayor that thanked us for our service and thought it would be a great idea, but they decided to not go with it at this time.
Or Lake Lotawanna is it?
Right, Lake Lotawanna, right. Since that was a quick one, we'll do one more.
Mike Lynn from District One. This city has a issue of building things and then having no money to maintain them. Fieldhouse, underfunded. Golf course, underfunded. Amazury Parkway, underfunded. You build things but have no money to maintain them. When is this going to stop? Because now you want to dump our new tax dollars for parks in a golf course. I will never step foot on that golf course. That's not a park. That's wrong. Our tax dollars go for parks, not a golf course that maybe 2% of this population, this town, will use. Most of those people probably use that golf course, don't even live in Blue Springs. But yet, our tax dollars have got to fund it.
Well, I'll tell you first, I made the suggestion in the budget meeting to sell the golf course and the conference center because I agree with you.
I'll address that a little bit. I know the fieldhouse is an answer I don't have. But I know with the police station, and I think the fieldhouse has as well, it does have a built-in reserve for future maintenance. So the fieldhouse will be sustainable moving forward. The police station is sustainable moving forward. The golf course has been here for 30 years, so it's not something that's new. And the debt for the golf course pays off in eight years. So right now, the golf course is covering its operations. So we don't subsidize the operations of a golf course. The budget doesn't. It pays for debt. Once that debt pays off, anything the golf course makes over operations will actually add to the city's budget. So at some point, it could become an asset that actually makes money for the city, but it's been here for, I mean, long before I was on the council.
We could have a nice recycling.
Yeah, well, and one thing with the golf course too, there is land that was donated to the city 20 years ago, whatever it was, that is restricted to only be a golf course. So maybe we could sell it to a private golf. I'm not saying I'm opposed to the idea of selling it. We've talked about this over the years. But some of that land is restricted. It's not like we could sell it and build a new mall there or something. It has to be a golf course. If we end up keeping it and not end up selling it, it could end up being a moneymaker someday. And I'll let you address some of the future maintenance stuff.
Cities shouldn't own a golf course.
Yeah, yeah, I understand. I understand.
There's more, I mean, Independence owns one. It's failing. Kansas City owns multiples, and when I worked for a company, I played on a couple of them, Hodge Park and Shoal Creek. And they're okay golf courses, but they need a lot of, cities don't have the money to maintain golf courses. They need to be sold and gotten rid of. I'm sure you can find a developer to put nice houses out on it.
Well, I won't belabor the golf course. I think Councilman Levesey kind of summed it up to the best of kind of where the golf course is at today. But you did mention the fieldhouse, and I can certainly tell you that the fieldhouse, since it's operated, last year was its first full year. If you look at the amount of revenue over expenses, it had $150,000 surplus last year. It's driving much more than that this year. All that is put into a reserve fund for any future maintenance of that facility. As an example, we had an air conditioning unit that went out just recently. We're in the process of replacing it. It's all being funded by those reserve funds that the fieldhouse is operating under.
What about earlier this year when I went to another meeting in District One, and the fieldhouse was understaffed by about three or four employees? Has that been resolved? Do we have money? If we can't staff employees, we can't offer the services you want.
I think what you were referring to was the staffing infrastructure that we put in place as we went along. One of the things that we did, we made a decision when we first started that operation, that building, was to fund that or to staff that building with our existing staff. And then as revenues out were provided, would allow us to add additional staff. This year, we've added three full-time staff members to that, and we're still driving a higher net profit than we did last year that would go into reserves for future improvements.
All right, thank you.
Well, it depends on who it is, whether I'm one or not, you know. Robert, how are you?
A 47-year resident of Blue Springs. Is that good enough?
Well, we've been here about the same time.
I've been out. My name is Robert Blaine. I'm District Three, and I'd kind of like, are we ending this up? Is this about the end?
Yeah, you're wrapping it up.
Well, I want to end on a kind of a positive note for a change. Several weeks ago, I talked to my third district representative, councilwoman, and complained about a curb that was disintegrating in front of my house. And she suggested that I call the city and see what could be done about it. So I did. I called the city. I navigated your website, and that was not all that easy. But I finally got to the right person. They came out to my house, assessed the problem, fixed it, and did a great job. And the thing that I would like to close this meeting on today is that whenever we have concerns about city services or the job that you're doing well or not doing well, I think the thing for us to do is to, rather than sit on our feelings and get all hot and bothered and then come to these kinds of meetings and vent, that we go to the city people with the problem as we experience it and see if they can work with us to get something done. So I want to end it on that kind of a note, that I think all of us have a responsibility to watch for our city, to take care of our city. And with regard to the recycle problem, good things sometimes require hard work to solve. And I think we've run into one here tonight with a couple of really good ideas from the group. So that's why I...
Thank you, Robert. Appreciate it. All right. Well, thank you all for coming. We're going to end this Town Hall Facebook meeting. And I think there were some, no, I can see it from here because I have some replacement eyes, too. There's still some cookies back there and I think some water, so feel free to indulge. Thank you again. I wanted to thank the officers for being here to make sure that you're safe. And again, be careful and have a safe and enjoyable evening.